Okay, all right. I thank you for joining us. Will you please stand and pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. We have no request to speak in open forums, so the next item is the superintendent's report on the Capitol Project.
Sure. I will start right with the Capitol Project presentation. So just a quick update, their first informational flyer was sent home about a week and a half ago or so. And the purpose of that was to give an overview of the scope of the work, right? Not 3D rendering models, it's just an overview of what is being proposed to be completed. The next piece will be, I'll share the presentation tonight. This presentation will be used for the first in-person public presentation on Wednesday, August 17th. If you could make Wednesday, August 17th, it's at 5:30 right here in the library. I'll be presenting with our architects. And then the second in-person meeting will be Tuesday, September 6th, again, right here in the library at 5:30. In between those dates, August 17th and the 6th of September. Right now, we're looking to do a mailing of, the second mailing, on Monday, the 22nd of August. So it'll be the 22nd, 23rd, something like that. And that will include some 3D renderings, perhaps maybe of the fitness center, the amphitheater, tennis courts, synoto learning spaces, things like that. And again, an overview, scope of the project, not as word-heavy, more picture-heavy, than it would be word-heavy. And then on September 6th, we will send a reminder to vote card to the community. And then the vote is Tuesday, September 13th, which is concurrent with our Board of Education meeting. And with that too, is I'll send out an email reminder about this too. But I'd like to be able to provide a facility washroom on the 13th for the board as well too. Prior to the meeting at 5:30, so showing the facilities, but I'll send you any invite and put that on the calendar. So just, we'll go through this presentation, you've seen this, but I wanted to make sure that you see it before we do the first in-person meeting. These are our partners, as we talked about before. Here was really the focus curriculum and opportunities, the energy savings and maintenance repair. You're trying to track the focus areas of this. So what are the needs driving this project? The scope of the work is pretty straightforward. So we're going to improve student health and wellbeing, create fresher classrooms permanently. Again, we learned a lot of stuff from COVID is outside opportunities are great for kids, whether it be free play or outdoor classrooms. So we're going to create some permanent locations like that, improve our athletic facilities, provide age-appropriate play areas, and basic district-wide repairs and maintenance, energy savings, efficiencies and things, and that's how they're linked. Again, the areas, you've seen this before, this is identical to what we did before, but I want to make sure that we hit those areas, the elementary, elementary, junior, senior high school, the athletic complex and our Masonville building. First and foremost with the new pavement. So this pavement will all be redone, very similar to what we did in the high school here. And somebody had asked, how come we didn't do it when we did all of the campus down here? It's because it just came off of being aidable up at the transportation center. So now we can go through it and get full aid on that. And we'll do the entire complex up there. Replace the existing playground. So if you see on the left, top left, that's their current playground with asphalt and one net rest with some swings. And on the right is just as a Google map snapshot of what we're proposing to put on that, to utilize that space better. It would be all-new asphalt where the basketball courts are. And then connecting those classrooms all the way around with turf, so we can use that year-round. And then it would wrap all the way around to where the hoop house is. I'll show that in a minute. But those would be the large apparatuses, the free play area.
Now, is the turf going to be the whole playground area or just underneath?
Oh, I'm sorry. It's going to be, and I'll stand here and show you real quick on this TV if you guys want to look. So actually, the turf area is going to connect this connection here, all of these classrooms, all the way around. So the only thing that won't be will be the new asphalt basketball court. This is a space where we saw classes naturally go during recess. So we saw it's an opportunity to build in a place where classes could meet. They could go out more collectively, if you will. So this is in the bus loop, to maximize the bus loop here. Sidewalk coming out, seating all the way around for, like I said, outdoor learning spaces.
I think in the brochure that you sent out, sort of the community was going to be able to use these.
Yeah, community access.
So you're going to have that open for them?
They are, yep. So, yeah, I mean, again, there's no set schedule of what we've talked about. But we know how popular, and we're going to bring it back, is the pool parties in which we're going to send something out. I think September 1st, it goes out, end of August it goes out. Our information with community walking program at the elementary track, right? Accessibility kind of to go along with this. And, yeah, I mean, they're not going to be fenced off, right? I mean, they're going to be there, right? The pavilions are going to be open, right? So if a modified baseball is meeting there for a team dinner, right? They could have it outside, something like that. This is the area, so if you loop around, if you keep coming around here, the playground's going to come right up to here. Right at the back over by the pod, so this loops all the way around here, right? So what we're talking about is this area here is if you come over here, so the playground would meet right up to here. And this would be all instructional outdoor space, right? It would connect, so we're talking about a sidewalk that comes across, all connected. This is the current existing hoop house or greenhouse, an amphitheater built into the hill, still with our drainage here. So you could have classes out there. You know, somebody talked about, oh, that'd be cool, you could do like mini drama plays during the summer outside. You could do, right? So there's just lots of possibilities for outside, learning outside, access, if you will. Next piece is a pavilion, so what we're talking about is this, this current storage shed that's on top of the hill. We'll take that down and then we'll build the sidewalk that goes in here with a nice outdoor pavilion. Some general maintenance and repairs that we need to do here, some lighting upgrades, the humidification system in the pool, which it needs to be replaced, it's an existing one. Some sidewalk replacement, expanded seating area, actually right outside. What we learned is, you know, getting kids outside during the cafeteria time, just to dress that up a little bit, make it a little bit nicer, some foundational cracks, if you will. And fuel oil tank and pumps. The fitness center, just to point out a couple of things, just to orientate you a little bit here. So this would be the hallway, if you're familiar with Mr. Townsend's room. This is Mr. Townsend's. One thing that we hear is that there's no natural light in there, right? There's not good ventilation, not any natural light. So we talked about moving the main door over here, install drinking fountains in here. This would be a wall of windows, right? And what we would do is there's a storage room right now and a laundry room. Sometimes they call it the coach's room. We'll expand this into the all-fitness center. And we're going to relocate the laundry room into, there's a custodial closet just down the hallway with a storage room down here. And they can configure the storage room and the custodial closet to be the washroom hall of one shut deal. So expanding a little bit, putting in some nice windows. This is just a mock-up of potential equipment, but increase square footage adjustments up a little bit. The next piece is where we had a tent right outside the gymnasium, the high school gymnasium, in the grass area there. We put a tent up there during COVID a year ago. It was requested to do it again this last year. It was used all of the time, almost every single day, for science classes, math classes, right? Lunch, recess. So we'd like to build a permanent pavilion on that grass area. And again, this is not necessarily what it would look like, we were talking about this, what it could potentially. The tennis courts, and again, I know I've shared this before. We're going to go from four to five tennis courts, match play is five, tennis courts at one time, five matches at one time.
You could add like some pickleball courts. Because I know that's a popular thing that's coming up throughout the country.
It is, yeah, they do. They do.
I'm not sure if you have enough room to like put them on there or not.
So right now, this is an maximized space right up to, not quite the property line, but to your easement where you're going to build from. Yeah, I don't know, I mean, I could definitely throw it to the architects and them. We actually have some community women that come and play during the day. They're up there quite a bit, right? I think we're good. Banning cages added to both softball and to the baseball fields. They would be permanent, somebody asked if they would be permanent. LED lights upgrades to the track and the track corners. Also LED lights for the tennis courts, the baseball and the softball. And again, I think I shared this last time, working with Musco Lighting, what a great company. Just well-thought-out designs and ideas of what can be done.
It's wonderful, I mean, it was great after the softball field was lit, but now they have all the fields lit. That'd be very nice.
Yeah, it'd be awesome. Parking lot across the way up and what we'll call like the pit, across where the community gardens are. Again, if you take a look at the current parking lot that's up there, hook it 90 degrees and move it across the way with lighting on it. And then our Masonville campus is to replace some controls, remove underground field tanks and convert it over to propane, replace the existing boilers and the circulator pumps, again, with propane. And as I mentioned this before, no additional tax impact. The district created a capital reserve, it was May of 2019, capital reserve. It's fully funded with a million dollars in, so that will offset any local costs. State funding of $7 million, so it would be a total of $8 million capital project. Vote would be on September 13th, right here in the high school cafeteria, from 11 to 8 p.m. And I kind of gave the timeline, so this is the presentation that I'll do for the in-person meeting on the 17th. And then again, on the 6th. And then in between there, there will be another flyer that'll go home, that'll be more of your rendering of your scope of work. And then a reminder flyer, postcard that will go home on September 6th. And I encourage if you can be there on the 17th and the 6th, that would be great. And then, like I said, the flyer, if you just get the word out.
Have you got a lot of questions after the flyer went out?
No, no, just a lot of positive feedback. I was able to present it at the Chamber of Commerce meeting last Tuesday. It was extremely well-received, talked with some realtors that were there. They said, hey, can I take this and send it with my home flyers and about two? I said, absolutely, sure. So, no, actually, it was extremely well-received. I've only, haven't got any questions, just positive feedback. And to the superintendent's report, just a couple of things I want to share is, I know I mentioned it during our work session. Is, today was the first of four days for a new teacher orientation. It was, I mean, I always look forward to the first start of new teacher orientation. It's a great day, we collected some feedback from some of that, well, you heard one of the pieces of feedback. Just, hey, what'd you think of the first day? One was probably the most profound for me is, I said, so what'd you think of the first day? First time ever being a teacher. And he's like, I felt comfortable. And that was awesome, I thought that was pretty cool. Not scared, not overwhelmed, it's comfortable, right? So I thought that was good. So new teacher orientation, like I said, started today, tomorrow, and then the next two days, I think, are the 23rd and 24th. Does that sound right? Or something like that?
Two weeks.
Two weeks from now. Just one thing I want to share really quick is just a visual from the School Based Health Clinic is, so this is the data from last year, I just want to share. So I get this annually and I just got it, otherwise we would have had it in a weekly update last Friday, but I just got it. So I wanted to make sure I shared it here, in case people ask of, because I do get questions, especially parents that are growing for the first time in Sydney, is like, hey, what's a School Based Health Clinic? Is it like your nurse's office? And I said, no, it's a little bit different, right? So I just wanted to share this piece. So reported school attendance, according to their information, around 1,122 kids. Number of students enrolled in the School Based Health Clinic is 904, so at 81%. So we've been right around the 80, 82% of participation in School Based Health Clinic, really, since its inception. Total number of school-based visits, 4,750. Total just of mental health visits is 1,168. Dental visits, 321. Total number of users of the School Based Services, 763, so 84% of that. Total number of annual completed exams, 412. School-based health enrollment patients, up-to-date with immunizations, we're talking about HPV and flu, 73%. Patients that have had two COVID vaccines, 37%. Again, that's out of the enrollment, patients that have completed HPV immunization series 45. And then the staff that are at the School Based Health Clinic, just to share, Dr. Kobe is the physician that's here. But Chris and Newger is the PA that's here on a daily basis. So I just thought that that information was important to share. Just the pure volume of School Based Health Clinic visits in a year, right? That's pretty remarkable. Now, during the summertime, it's open here, but some other clinics are closed, other schools. So this is a regional one that's open all year round. So, again, I just wanted to share that. And I think this will get a timeline for the Capitol Project. We closed out the, last week, four weeks of summer camps. It was awesome, it was hot, it was awesome. And good turnout. This is the first year that we had our grades four, six camps were maxed out, but our K-1 and our 2, 3 were not maxed out. Usually it's the flip of that, which is wide, not really short. But between our sports camps and our summer enrichment camps, we had just under 200 kids here each day. So it was awesome. And then coming up, I think we're going to send out on the 11th, information for the after-school program, starting the first day of school. And I think all the information's going to be backed by the 25th?
25th.
Yeah, 25th. So we'll send that out, do a school messenger call to all families, I think on the 11th. Just as a, just as a flyer that's going to happen.
I may find that the kids that participated in the second, third grade are really selling the program as being great. And that's why your fourth and sixth are really maxing out and filling up. Because the second and third grade didn't know what it was about, you know, so you didn't have the enrollment. Where the fourth and sixth, they got a chance to experience it, they liked it. It could be a very good sign for us.
Yeah, it was great. And again, I think that Rob, we talked about this, I think this is the first year that we saw four, six, even prior COVID, being maxed out in those sessions.
Right, sports camps and
Sports camps.
Sessions were camp sessions for four seasons.
And something we learned too, we initially set the sports games number at 20. I don't know why we picked 20, we just picked 20, right? And then we saw people that were calling us and we saw that they couldn't get in, so we changed that to 30. And the coaches were like, yeah, shut it to 30, right? And then nobody, I don't think anybody got shut out of sports games once they turned it to 30. We were right around that 25 to 28, there were a couple that were right at 30. So it was great participation for the sports games. Yeah, I mean, it was a good program. Now, I say that the K-1, 2, 3 weren't maxed out, I mean, there was capacity of like one or two per session, right? Per group, so it was, I mean, well-attended, so it wasn't like it was half-capacity, but there were a couple slots left open. The one thing that we're going to explore a little bit is, again, maybe this is premature to talk, but I think it's important to put out here is, there were some people that just registered for camps and never attended. It was like they held a slot. And I don't know if it prevented other people from getting on, because we didn't really get people that called in and said, hey, I didn't get on. But there were some, there were some families that locked in slots that never came all four weeks, any of the days. So just something to, we may want to explore a little bit on how to prevent that moving forward. Because something like that happened that, you know, helped up a slot for another family that couldn't get in, like we might. Again, we'll just, we'll explore that, we'll come up with some ideas. But that was just kind of new data that we pulled yesterday.
Are you planning to keep the pool open throughout August?
We are, yep. So we extended it, so the community swim, which has been working out great. I just met with the mayor on Friday, just gave an update on kind of the mid-summer checkpoint of where we were at. And so community swim on the Fridays, we've been averaging anywhere from like 20 to 25, from the 11 o'clock to 4 o'clock. Family swim, same, I'd say number about 25 to 30. So it's, people are there, right? They're using it, which is great. So, yeah, it's going to be open from here on out. You'll also see, we're going to send something out on social media with regards to the community accessibility is, you know, Tom, you talked about the trap. So what we're going to do, and I'm just going to use that as an example, because usually alumni field, we're going to start to open that, starting on September 8th, for community walking program. Program is just really access, right? From 5 o'clock till dusk, right? And then they'll lock it up at dusk, and they'll do that Monday through Friday. And then really, the idea of that is the tennis courts, or maybe pickleball courts, is to give that access, because there aren't, right? There aren't in the community, we see people use that. So same type of thing is, once they're done, although we see people playing it right now, 5 o'clock to dusk, right? It's open. And then the playground, once the elementary playground is up and running, right? When we redo it, is 5 o'clock till dusk. So it gives some community access to that. So we're going to send something out, I think we're going to send it out, I can't remember what date it goes out, but it starts September 8th.
So is it planned to do that year-round?
Yeah.
Because like to dusk in September is not, that's late, but in the summertime it is.
Sure it is. So, yeah, and that's why we put until dusk, just because, I mean, are you going to walk in the middle of winter? And really, it'll be weather, I mean, that'll depend on the weather, right? Whether you can plow or not like that, but, yeah, we're going to try it year-round. And I think that's all we got.
Any more questions? Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Do you, do you want to mention real quick about the meeting at the end of the month?
Oh, I'm sorry, thank you very much, I appreciate it. We've had to do this for, I don't know how many over years, right? Is Delaware County has not provided the tax rule and warrant for us yet. So we will have to have a meeting, I don't know if it's going to be Tuesday, August 23rd, or Tuesday, August 30th, because all we got read this upwards is end of the month. End of the month is what we have right now. And I think they shared with us in the last update is, you know, we've asked, because we have Otigo County, we have Sinego County's information. I checked out of the Brune schools, and they have their tax warrants from Brune County. So it is a reoccurring issue with Delaware County, we've reached out for meetings, we did that a year ago. And lots of times what they say is, we don't have the information back from all of the towns, right? So we can't do it. So it is what it is, we're going to have to have a special meeting towards the end of the month. Again, I don't know if it's the 23rd or the 30th, we'll have to prove the tax warrant and the tax rule for that.
Will we likely do it virtual?
We're not sure. I want to double-check and make sure to see if you actually have to sign it, if you have to sign the tax warrant rule. I don't know if you could do that later on, or if we could do an electronic signature.
So this is the one that we have to sign? I asked you if you
Yeah, yep. So you may, we may have to sign it, where you could do a virtual meeting, but then you just have to, you know, sign it the next day. But I'll let you know, please, we know more.
Thank you.
Yep. Thanks for the reminder.
Moving on, minutes. Resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the minutes from the regular Board of Education meeting held on July 5th, 2022. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie? Resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the minutes from the Special Board of Education meeting held on July 19th, 2022.
Sorry.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie? Resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the personnel consent agenda as presented. All those in favor? Opposed? Disenied? Carrie? Thank you, I tried to scan. Resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the consent agenda as presented. All those in favor? Opposed? Carrie? Resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve admittance for the non-resident students as presented for the 2022-2023 school year. Discussion?
Can you just give a little bit of, I know all the staff ones at the bottom, the top ones, have many of those students already attended here previously?
Yep.
Are there any?
One.
Because we got a little influx, because we stayed open during COVID.
We did, that was a little loose for the night. Yep, some of them had moved here, just moved to Sydney, attended to the non-resident tuition. But, yeah, there's one new, otherwise all reoccur.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie? Resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve a merger with Unitigo Central School of Modified Field Hockey. Second. Discussion?
This is one student from Unitigo that played summer league with, I know this is Coach Race, just doesn't have the access to the team.
This made me nervous, because then we were merging, and I saw it was one student. Are there students there that hear about it?
We'd have to prove it, it'd have to come back here.
Each person?
Yeah.
They just don't have a team this year?
They've never had a team. It's something similar to what we did with a golfer from GMU, because they didn't have an opportunity, so same.
His brother worked longer though.
They're good.
Yeah.
Any other questions? All those in favor? Opposed? Carrie? Resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the overnight class of 2023 Senior Trip, June 9th through 11th, 2023 to Boston, Massachusetts, as presented in attached document. Discussion?
Just, we approve it early on out, so we've done it in August for the last few years, and so that they can actually make travel arrangements in, you know, early on, so that's why we're doing it.
The detail was very, like a great trip.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie? Resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the 2022-2023 Sydney School District Professional Development Plan. Discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Carrie? Resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the Emergency Management Plan as presented at the July 5th, 2022 meeting. Discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Carrie? Resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the recertification of leaded dilators at the Sydney Central School District as presented. Discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Carrie? Resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the Preventative Services Agreement between the Delaware County Department of Social Services and the Sydney Central School District for the 2022-23 school year. Discussion?
This is for two case managers that are housed right here in the school. We've had this partnership for a long time, we went to two a couple of years ago. So there's one in the elementary school, Sydney Elementary, and there's one in the high school.
And they have to say, the catch out the doors $10,000, but the rest is in kind.
Correct.
Providing space and stuff like that.
Yeah, it's, you can't beat it.
All those in favor? Opposed? Carrie? Board member comments? Well, thank you everybody for coming and spending time with us tonight to work on our work session, especially to all of you. We know you have a lot going on with the teacher orientation today, but very excited about the coming here.
And just really quick, is, do we want to tentatively plan for the January meeting to do the venue check-in?
Yeah.
For that, okay.
Yeah.
So we'll do something very similar to what we did.
Any other comments? All right, motion to adjourn. All those in favor? Opposed? Carrie? Thank you very much, and have a good night.
That was challenging, it was so long.
Run my kids to a team.